Today is the fifteenth of September two thousand twenty. The time is six thirty. We'd like to begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask your city clerk to do roll call, please.
Harrington? Harrington?
Here.
Okay. McKinney absent. O'Doherty?
Here.
Pierce?
Pierce is here. Sorry.
Schuster?
Here.
Stalder?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
And Shumway?
Here.
That is eight present, one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We'll begin, as we do each city council meeting, with public comments. Uh, the first, uh, public comments are on non-agenda items. And we have a three-minute limit. And we'll go for thirty minutes typically unless there's not enough public comments. So this time I would ask if there's anyone on, uh, in the council chambers that would like to make public comments at this time. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to make public comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And now I'll go to the Vice Mayor Gabriel and ask him to take us through changes in the agenda and setting of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a second by Councilor Pierce. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. At this time, so the agenda's been set. And at this time, I've asked the Vice Mayor to read a proclamation. And, uh, I'll turn the time over to him at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to read this proclamation as this is one of my first jobs in college. And this is in recognition of National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day. Whereas October second, National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day encourages appreciation to the men and women who keep our schools and workplaces across the nation running smoothly. And whereas the City of Laramie has a Facilities Maintenance Division that conducts custodial and maintenance duties for city facilities and properties. And whereas these workers operate behind the scenes and are often underappreciated for the hard work they do day after day. And whereas these are the personal, uh, keeping facilities and properties clean and well-maintained. Whereas while delivering outstanding services and running a well-maintained and operating building, they contribute to critical first impressions and the success of the city operations. And whereas their skill saves our city money as well-maintained carpets and surfaces test, uh, last longer and seasonal updates and maintenance helps buildings run more efficiently. And as a result, the buildings are safer and healthier for those entering them. And whereas the work is physically demanding and depending on the position, these workers may work varying shifts and possibly in several locations. And whereas we can all do our part to help them do their jobs as well. We too can be clean by keeping our workstations neat, picking up ourselves, doing some light, dusting around our desk, office, or cubicle, and acknowledging that there's no reason to leave a mess for anyone else when we can simply do our part to help. Now therefore, be it resolved, to further the awareness of the value of the Facilities Maintenance Division, I, Councilor Gabriel, acting for the Mayor and President and the governing body of the City of Laramie, Joe Shumway, hereby proclaim October second, two thousand twenty, as National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day and encourage our staff and residents to celebrate the importance of custodial workers within our city and our community. And we have with us tonight Shane Weber to receive the proclamation.
I just want to thank you guys for taking time to, uh, recognize the extra efforts that our staff has put in. And, uh, sometimes I feel it's unappreciated. And I'm gonna make sure that they're aware of this and, uh, they know that you guys are thankful for everything they do. Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much.
Shane, Zane, do you want to come up and receive this?
Yeah.
Do we have anyone to take a picture of? Good. And if you'll, if you will, huh, listen, yeah, we'll just present this together. And then if you'll hold that up, we'll get a picture of everybody and...
There you go.
Thanks.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Zane. By the way, we were all smiling.
With our eyes.
Yeah. Okay. We don't have any public hearings. We do have a couple of announcements. I'd like to ask our Police Chief, Dan Johnson, if you would make an announcement for us.
It's Fire Chief.
Did I say Police? Sorry.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, just one quick announcement. Uh, we're in the middle of, actually, you're sponsoring, the, uh, food drive that's going on right now with Interfaith. And it runs September twelfth through the twentieth. We have collection points at all three of the fire stations, downtown stations at Fourth and Iverson, the, uh, Station Two's at, uh, Twenty Third and Reynolds, and the West Laramie Fire, Fire Stations out on, uh, just out past the Y, uh, going on one thirty. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to remind the public that, uh, food drive's going on. And, uh, bins get rolled out first thing in the morning and we take them in in the evening. So, uh, you can donate anytime at any one of the stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. And then I have received a letter from the International Association of the Chief of Police, uh, who is, uh, President Chief Stephen R. Castevans. And he sent a letter that I'd like to read. And, and I, you know, I think this is very appropriate because we just had nine eleven and there were so many sacrifices that have been made by our firemen, by our police, and by many people. And I think it's always important for us to recognize their service. And this is the letter that we received from him, so I'd like to read that at this time. "There are no words to express how I feel about the horrific events in Los Angeles, California, and the sickening ambush and attempted assassination of two Los Angeles County deputies. My thoughts and prayers along with those of the LAC, of the IACT and police officers around the globe are with the deputies, their families, friends, and their colleagues in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. In addition, the actions of the protesters that showed up at the hospital chanting anti-police sentiment while two deputies are fighting for their lives are both shocking and appalling and should be condemned by all segments of society. Violence is never the solution. It does nothing to bring us together. It does absolutely nothing to advance positive relationships. It merely increases the divide. Police officers like the people they serve are fathers, mothers, husbands, wives, daughters, and sons." I implore everyone to remember that. So I salute the service that our police and our firemen do for our community. And I'm more than happy to read this, this letter in recognition of that today. Are there any disclosures by any council members on any item that there is a conflict of interest on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go back to the Vice Mayor to, uh, go through the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. Could we have roll call?
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McKinney absent? Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, one absent.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved. Now we'll move to the regular agenda. The first item is item number eleven. Councilor Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve acceptance of grant awards CRF sixty-nine through CRF seventy-four for two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars for CARES Act relief funding, in which award amounts may be subject to change based on the total allocation given to the City of Laramie by the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board, and authorize the city manager to sign CARES Act reimbursement agreements per Resolution two thousand six dash twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. Malia Brown, our Chief Operating Officer, will introduce the cited to us.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a long process. We're now in a different phase of the CARES Act funding. We did the applications, uh, went to council. The State Loan and Investment Board, uh, reviewed our applications on August sixth. They approved six of the applications for two point three million. We're now at the point where we have to have grant, grant acceptance because there are grant funding. And that's what, um, this motion will do for us to make sure we're in compliance. And also, they were requiring us to have, uh, State Loan and Investment Board reimbursement agreements to ensure that we are, um, complying with all their rules. And, uh, so that's kind of what this funding's about. Um, just to note that we did get in our allocation because the State Loan and Investment Board went and allocated monies to the cities and counties. We have two point two six, two million, six thirty-five thousand. We are going to do an update to an application for our public safety with EMS for the difference so we can try to go get more reimbursements on that. Um, but this motion hopefully, uh, doesn't have me go back. I can just do it because I'm doing a motion in that, for that amount. So that's where we're at in the process. And once we get this to the slipboard, we'll actually fill out the reimbursement forms and maybe receive some of the money. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything you, you have.
Questions from anyone in council? Questions from anyone in the public? Ryan, do you see any?
No, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, council, any comments, uh, concerns, anything you want to say before we go to the vote to accept these funds? Councilor Pierce?
Yeah, I just want to thank, uh, city staff for all their efforts, uh, regarding these funds. I know it's, it's hard work and a lot of hoops, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this. Anyone else? Could we have roll call?
Stalder?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
McKinney absent? Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent.
All right, thank you. Item number eleven has passed and will now move to item number twelve. Councilor Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to award the bid for the Municipal Operations Center North Campus Site Demolition Project to Recycle Materials LLC of Casper, Wyoming in the amount of, oh dear, one hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred and six dollars plus a contingency of thirty-nine thousand, twenty-two dollars for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and amend the capital construction fund as appropriate and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. Uh, Brooks Webb, are you going to be introducing this to us?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, as you may recall, back in June, I presented an item regarding, uh, modification to the design of the Municipal Operations Center North Campus project. Uh, council unanimously approved the modification to the design on June sixteenth. Uh, for that design and ultimately for the construction to occur, uh, five buildings must be demolished, um, as we discussed at that meeting. Uh, after that meeting, I met with, uh, engineering staff to discuss our, our best move forward. Uh, we decided to expedite, to expedite the overall site process. Uh, we determined, uh, that we would in-house write the specs and compile the design and bid package for this demo portion of the project. Um, we will also handle the, uh, construction management in-house. Um, this was, uh, is going to be a lot of work for us right now as we're, you know, kind of wrapping up the construction season. But, um, we, we believe, uh, it's the best route and that we're going to save a significant amount of funds on, uh, outside consulting fees and, um, ultimately get, get the project moving, moving forward. Um, our engineering division completed the demo bid package in July. We went out to bid. Uh, at the same time, we were out to bid for asbestos, to, for, to removal of asbestos-containing materials uh, in the buildings. And, uh, that work has been completed by a licensed abatement contractor. So we're, we're ready for the full demo at this point. Uh, through the bid process, we inserted requirements, uh, to ensure, uh, recycling and reuse of materials. All metal and concrete materials are to be sorted and salvaged for reuse or recycling. Uh, in accordance with the city purchasing policy, bids were received on September first. Staff reviewed the bids that were submitted and we found no errors. Um, however, there was, uh, you can see a large discrepancy in the bid items. And the, the low bidder is significantly lower than the other three bids and significantly lower than our, um, engineered estimate. Um, so due to that discrepancy, we did a lot of, uh, reference checking. Um, we checked, uh, contacted the Town of DuBois, Sampson Construction, City of Casper, and the State of Wyoming regarding past performance on Recycle Materials LLC. Um, all, all of the references that we contacted stated that, uh, all past work from this contractor was unsatisfactory. And, um, they had nothing negative to say. So we're, uh, we feel good moving forward and we're super happy about the cost, um, of this part of the project. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions in council? Councilor Stalder?
Thank you, Mayor. Brooks, I'm just interested what you found out about the recycled materials. I mean, their bid was under two hundred thousand when all the other ones were above five hundred and fifty, and they're the only one from out of town. So what is their special sauce?
Yeah, you know, uh, Councilor Stalder, through you, Mayor, um, what, what I've seen and what we heard is that their real specialty is in the, uh, salvaging and recycling materials. And they take that, um, into account with their bidding. And, um, you know, basically, in, in the, in the returns they'll get for that recycled and recovered material, um, so they're really, it sounds like their specialty is the recycling and salvage. We actually, during the pre-bid process, uh, when we did the, the pre-bid walkthrough out at the site, um, some of the contractors, this one in particular, said that, uh, they would like a little more time on the contract so that they could complete more sorting of those materials. Um, because originally, we had this, this project pretty quick. And, and it was making it tough on those contractors to do all of the, uh, sorting that we were, we were wanting. So we actually extended this, the duration of this contract forty-five days from what it originally was um, so that they would have that time to really sort through those materials and remove them. But ultimately, to answer your question, I believe that, um, their, their, their special sauce, as you say, is, is that they are specializing in, in the removal, reuse, and recycling of the materials that they're demolishing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Pierce?
You know, this might be a little off-topic, but for, for Brooks, I, I'm wondering if you see any other need for this company, you know, in terms of what we're doing with recycling? I mean, have, were you, are you allowed to have further conversations with them?
Uh, Councilor Pierce, uh, through you, Mayor, um, through my research of, of, I, I thought the same thing. Um, and through my research of the company, I mean, really, they, their demolition is, is their thing. Um, uh, but yeah, I mean, I, I plan on having a conversation with them, especially specifically on metals. The, you know, we're, we're taking metals to our local people here, which is, is good, is good for them. But the cost we're seeing the return on it's pretty low. Um, so you know, if we can get another person in the game, that might help. Um, and then, you know, any, any future projects we do, uh, you know, we'll definitely reach out to them. And they're now in our, our vendor system, so they'll know when those projects come forward. But yeah, definitely for future stuff, uh, something to keep in mind with them.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anyone else on the council? Any questions from the council? Okay, let's go to questions from the public. Any questions regarding this project? City clerk, do you see any?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, let's go to comments. Councilor O'Doherty, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to thank our staff for, uh, undertaking the construction management part of it. I think it's really important to have a different set of eyes and also for, for doing the recycling. You know, that makes me happy, so thank you.
Any other comments? From anyone on the council? Do we have a roll call?
Okay. Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
McKinney absent? Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, one absent.
All right. That item passes, so we'll move forward with that. The next item we have is item number thirteen. That's, uh, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to authorize the City of Laramie to award a bid to Braun Northwest Incorporated in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars for the purpose of purchasing a Type One Class One ambulance and authorize the city manager to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. Our Fire Chief, Dan Johnson, is here to introduce this to us.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, uh, this project is a replacement for a two thousand twelve ambulance we're running right now. It has, uh, it's just hit, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, uh, and is eight years old. So, uh, it's due to be replaced. Uh, we went out to bid and, uh, we received two bids. One bid was rejected because they didn't follow the bid, uh, requirements as outlined. Uh, Braun Northwest was the only qualifying bid. Uh, the budget for the project is two hundred and ten thousand. They came in at one ninety-four, eight eighty-four. Uh, we recommend, uh, awarding the, the bid to Braun. It'll be the, uh, final, uh, it'll be the fifth in a series of Braun ambulances we have. So our fleet will be converted into, uh, those type of ambulance. Uh, the benefit, uh, to this program we started many years ago is that we're gonna be, the, the boxes on these ambulances are built, uh, exceeding specifications. And we're gonna be able to remount the same boxes on different chassis in the future. We hope to do that up to three times. So, uh, the replacement cost for ambulance will be roughly half of what we've been paying in the, in the future. So, um, we're recommending not, uh, doing the trade-in at this time, rejecting the trade-in offer for two thousand dollars for the, uh, current ambulance that we're replacing. We'd like to come forward to council with a plan on its future once, uh, we receive the other ambulance. Uh, we've, we've done several things with our, um, uh, trade-ins or the ones we've replaced. Uh, for the two thousand dollars, we've, uh, donated one. Uh, we've, uh, actually, we've donated two ambulances, uh, instead of taking the two thousand. And we leveraged that, those donations with grant narratives and, uh, on other grants we write. Uh, we've also, uh, uh, sold and/or, uh, had them, uh, stay a local in the volunteer systems here. And then we've also converted one into a, uh, SWAT ambulance with a, a Laramie Police Department, which we pull back once in a while and use as a six-line ambulance when we get busy. So, uh, it doesn't happen often, but it does happen. Uh, that being said, we'd like to make a decision to rec, make, make a recommendation to council uh, in the future on what we'd like to see happen with that ambulance once we know the interest in it locally. So, uh, stand for questions at this time.
All right. So, council, uh, are there any questions regarding the purchase at this time for this ambulance? All right. Any, anyone in the public that would like to make comments, questions, concerns regarding the purchase of this ambulance? Chief, before you sit down, I know you said you wanted to have some input on the trade-in or the use of the existing ambulance. Do you want that at this time or do you want us to just kind of think through it and then get back with you at a future date? Or what's your, what's your pleasure on that?
Uh, probably at a future date. Uh, we can, uh, what I like to do is to research the possibilities, what the interest is, and then come forward to council to give you the option to think about how we'd wanna do that, so...
I think that'd be a good process. Any, uh, Councilor Weaver, this is, any comment on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just quickly, I appreciate the, uh, the chief going over the, uh, rejection of the trade-in on that and, and the future plans. I think we, we have some council members who probably weren't on council the last time, um, the city and the fire, uh, department worked together to figure out what would be, uh, good use of the retiring ambulances. And I think that's, um, really wise to reserve our use of, uh, that vehicle until we have, uh, identified another, another option for it in the future. And that'll be a future discussion. But for, for those members of the council that haven't been around as long, we've been able to do some pretty, um, creative and, and positive things with those, uh, um, vehicles. And I think that's probably a better use of the city's capital than just going for the two thousand dollar trade-in credit on the, on the new ambulance. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver. Anyone else? Councilor Pierce?
Yeah, I would, I'd just like to echo what, uh, Councilor Weaver said. And, and honestly, I'm kind of anxious to see, to see where this one's gonna go. I think it's, it's such a great service and, um, I, I'm looking forward to future conversations, so thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Roll call?
Okay. McKinney absent? Stalder?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent.
All right. That item passes. And now, we go to the next item, which is item number fourteen. Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in reference to a special malt beverage permit for Cowboy State Brewing. I would move that city council approve the request by Cowboy State Brewing LLC, special malt beverage permit, number special five, located at the UW Stadium, to have this year's liquor license suspended as of September fifteenth of two thousand twenty. Transfer the four thousand liquor license fee to next year's special malt beverage permit fees upon receipt of the applications for the May eighth, two thousand twenty-one, through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two license year, due to the cancellation of the football season in response to COVID-nineteen.
Second?
Yeah, it's been moved in second by Counselor Doherty. City Clerk, did you want to give us some information on this?
Yeah. Okay, so on August twenty-eighth, we received a request to have the fees for this special malt beverage permit from Cowboy State Brewing to be refunded back into them, to their accounts. Unfortunately, due to Wyoming State Statute twelve dash four dash one oh five, refunds are not permitted on issued permits or licenses. So with discussions with the Wyoming State's Liquor Division and the Wyoming Attorney General's Office, we have come to an agreement that we can transfer the fees to next year's licensing term to give them a chance to reuse this, since they haven't been able to use it at all this year. If you do decide to transfer the fees and the football season continues in the spring, they will need to pull alcohol catering permits like they did normally in the past for every game and location that they would be serving at. I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public? Comments from the council? Uh, Counselor Schuster?
Thank you very much. Um, as a lot of people have seen on the news, some of the other divisions are voting whether to bring back football or not. So it looks like there might be somewhat of a college season this year. So we'll have to wait and see. I think everybody's doing a wait-and-see with each other to decide if they're going to or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schuster. Anyone else? Comments? So, has the public correct? City Clerk? Okay, Mr. Roll Call.
Okay, Weaver?
That's a yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
McKinney absent. Harrington?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero no, one absent.
Okay, so that item passes. Now we go to item number fifteen. Uh, and that's Counselor Schuster.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. The title is Spring Creek Village First Filing Final Plat. Move to deny the Spring Creek Village first filing as recommended by the Laramie Planning Commission based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, as included in the Planning Commission's staff report dated February twelfth, February tenth, two thousand twenty, subject to the approval criteria for the final plats found in Laramie Municipal Code fifteen point zero six point zero six zero point P point five small E, Roman numeral four point one dash five, and the county approval preliminary plat conditions.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, it's been moved in second by Counselor Pierce. Uh, Mr. Teeny, are you ready to introduce this to us?
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, good evening. The item before you is the Spring Creek Village Final Plat. This item has been before you in the past, uh, with, uh, fairly extensive discussion regarding, uh, the project. Most recently, the city council heard this item after it was recommended by the Planning Commission for approval. Uh, the item, when it was brought to city council last, was recommended then by staff to be remanded back to the Planning Commission for proper findings of fact and conclusions of law and conformance with council's approved preliminary plat conditions. Um, the item then did go back to the Planning Commission as the city council did remand it back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, uh, did reconsider the Spring Creek Village first filing final plat, but they were unable to make the necessary findings for their motion of approv, approval that they did originally give back on February tenth, two thousand twenty. So, following that, uh, the Planning Commission ultimately, uh, recommended denial of the final plat. The final plat now is back before the city council with a recommendation of denial for the same reasons as explained in original staff report, um, from February, as well as the times in which, uh, city staff has spoke with the city council. In the staff report and on the cover sheet, uh, provided some information, uh, the staff report remains largely unchanged because of, uh, the, the conditions of the site have not cha, have not changed. If you recall, the, uh, the, the large component of the discussion centers around the construction of Bill Nye Avenue, which is adjacent to and within the subdivision area, um, as part of the preliminary plat process, the construction and development of Bill Nye Avenue, as well as some of the other conditions, such as a sewer line and trails, were all discussed during that preliminary plat discussion. The city council, uh, chose to keep conditions as recommended by staff. And the final plat that's here before you does not comply with those conditions in which city council recommended approval of during the preliminary plat process. Um, in the cover sheet, uh, on page two, um, what we did is we provided some just additional information to center it around the primary discussion that's occurred over the, the many meetings related to this item. Um, I'm going to go through a few of those. Uh, once again, uh, city staff does not believe that this final plat is submitted by the applicant meets the requirements of code to approve as a final plat. It's, does not meet the comprehensive plan, the major street plan, or the conditions of approval as approved by the city council during their, the preliminary plat process. The, there's been a lot of discussion about trying to work with developers and continuing to work with developers, specifically regarding Bill Nye Avenue. Um, with any applicant, we always do that. Uh, during the preliminary plat, plat process, which is the appropriate time to do so, uh, we did attempt to work with the developer on different options related to Bill Nye Avenue construction. As you'll see in the staff report, we've provided, uh, different costs and values related to this project. One, one item is, uh, we did take a look and did discuss with the, uh, applicant and talked to them about full construction cost, which comes in about one point one eight billion dollars, compared to two other options that were presented by staff for consideration that would have brought the cost down to seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars or five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. None of those options were, uh, considered, uh, by the applicant, and so we were unable to bring any of those options forward to city council. When the, really, the only option that was presented to staff was no construction of Bill Nye Avenue, which staff did not agree with and did not present to city council as an option. Uh, you'll recall during the preliminary plat process, the applicant did make that request. The city council at the time chose not to, uh, uh, choose that as an option and require the construction as required by code. Secondly, um, staff thinks it's important to point out some information regarding the cost of construction of Bill Nye Avenue. Once again, the, it is an estimated cost because we have not seen any construction plans related to the Bill Nye Avenue provided by the developer, which would be customary in a project like this. Uh, we only are estimating, we're estimating the project at one point one eight billion dollars. To note, this also includes the sewer line that's required within the portion of Bill Nye Avenue. The applicant has continued to express that the total cost of this project is one point seven million dollars. This is misleading. Uh, the cost of one point seven million dollars really is related to the bonding and financial securing, uh, security mechanism required for final plats. Uh, the developer could choose to construct the portions of Bill Nye and sewer system right away and would be able to reduce their financial security bonding amount to one point four billion dollars. In total, the applicant still will only be required to construct what's per the final plat, which is, we said, is estimated at one point one eight billion dollars. Um, another item that we think is important to point out is that this final plat really is not the full construction of Bill Nye Avenue. There are other components of Bill Nye Avenue, part of that one point one eight million dollars that's located and will be part of other final plats that will come before you in the future if this project moves ahead. Uh, this final plat is estimated at about eight hundred thousand dollars, give or take, probably within the, uh, for the portion of the final plat that's being requested. Should also be noted, we're talking about, um, when it comes to Bill Nye Avenue, the city, um, is not requiring the developer to build all of Bill Nye Avenue that's adjacent to their site. Approximately one thousand two hundred and sixty feet of Bill Nye Avenue exists adjacent to the site. The site, um, and this final plat is actually going to, in total, with all the final plats, will be responsible for about seven hundred and fourteen feet, or just over half of Bill Nye Avenue. As we've noted, uh, many times, a large component of Bill Nye Avenue, like we've said, is, uh, wrapped up in another development agreement and associated with another project in the area that is required to construct that portion. Um, finally, staff just wants to express, um, they continue to, or, or, or note that the applicant continues to express that Bill Nye Avenue is not needed for this subdivision or is really related to this subdivision or development. Uh, staff has continued to provide, uh, information and shows within the staff report that we do believe it's necessary for the development. First off, uh, the city of Laramie, Albany County, and the state of Wyoming has identified the necessity of Bill Nye Avenue as an east-west transportation route for the community. The route's located with, uh, is within this development and will provide access to and from the development despite the assertion of the applicant. Uh, this route's located based on future anticipated development and needed roads for the anticipated traffic volumes that will occur because of development in the area. City of Laramie's comprehensive plan identifies Bill Nye Avenue as an east-west transportation route for the community. This is the same fundamental reasons as identified in the major street plan. Um, the applicant also contends that Bill, Boswell Drive serves as the main access in and out of the subdivision, which it currently does. However, as they note within their subdivision process and master plans, as well as other development portions of their, uh, of this project, it's highly likely Boswell Drive will be closed and, um, either at Bill Nye Avenue or at Third Street, thus reducing the access to Third Street and the ability of Boswell Drive, uh, being allowed to serve as the main access point for the subdivision. With that impending closure, we do look at how subdivisions like this connect with the rest of the community. Bill Nye Avenue is a main component of that. Traffic studies that were produced by the applicant in association with their storage unit complex, which is adjacent, and it's already constructed, as well as traffic study updates provided with the preliminary plat further support the need for Bill Nye Avenue when Boswell is closed. Their traffic studies indicate that when Boswell Drive, um, is potentially closed, it would require significant improvements in it, uh, including widening of a bridge on Ninth Street. This is further information that provides that Bill Nye is essential to the subdivision and is needed for future development in the area, as well as connection, um, of this subdivision to other area transportation networks. Um, another, another point, Boswell Drive, their main access point, does connect to Bill Nye Avenue. Um, although Bill Nye Avenue is not developed yet, it does provide connection and will provide ingress and egress out of this area and the subdivision. Um, the applicant has also contended and, and shown you cost estimates, I believe, in their last, uh, sub, uh, presentation to city council, which was also presented to the Planning Commission, regarding the cost. Um, you know, it should be noted that this sub, this subdivision is only one portion and small portion of the total project, the preliminary plat. Already, the developers indicated that they've constructed a three point four million dollar storage unit complex that's adjacent to the site. In addition, you have multiple commercial lots that are located within the subdivision, which is, and that's six commercial lots and a hundred and thirty-five single-family residential lots. Um, of those commercial lots, um, you'll have, you have many of those lots that are large enough in size that will accommodate fairly large-scale commercial developments, as well as the hundred and thirty-five residential units. When you actually start to take a look at some of these different scenarios and how that breaks out in terms of, uh, the value and cost value of, of a project like this, yeah, um, looking at just a hundred and thirty-five of the lots, the residential lots only, in comparison to the total cost of Bill Nye Avenue, the total cost would be about eight thousand dollars per lot. That does not include, including, uh, the value of the commercial lots or the existing, uh, facility that's already been constructed adjacent to this. When you start looking at the, some of those numbers, the not, the, the, uh, the lost or the cost per lot to accommodate for the construction of Bill Nye Avenue starts to drop, you start to look at the range of seven thousand and six thousand dollars, depending upon how much value you may put from the lots of those commercial developments into the construction of Bill Nye Avenue. Finally, um, in two thousand fifteen, uh, the applicant requested that portion of this area be upzoned um, from commercial B-one zoning to commercial B-two zoning. Uh, this increase in zoning classification allows for more intense uses, typical those associated with major commercial areas, and u- ultimately resulting in more traffic. Within the staff report presented in two thousand fifteen, justifications as upzoning were in part justified by the fact that these more intense uses are appropriate for this area due to the proximity to other commercial zones, major streets, listing Third Street as an arterial and built future Bill Nye Avenue extension as an arterial and Ninth Street as a collector. Even the applicant's own cover letter states that the rezoning is to allow for rezoning of four lots, as well as adjacent rights-of-way, which was referencing Bill Nye Avenue and Boswell. So with that, uh, the, the city, the city in its review of this final plat believes that it does not meet the conditions required for approval and recommends denial. Um, I believe the applicant, uh, is in the room, as well as, uh, their counsel, and so I would be happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Let's start with questions from the city council to Mr. Derek Teeny. Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Derek, can you tell me what the other two options for, uh, Bill Nye were that reduced the cost to, I think you said, um, seven hundred and twenty and like five sixty?
Yes, Mayor and Council, let me just pull that up here. So, in the, in some of the considerations that, that we posed to the applicant at the time, uh, the preliminary plat was, was looking at the fact that a portion of this Bill Nye Avenue on the west side is adjacent to Interstate eighty right-of-way. Um, you can see that in some of the figures and the plats that are provided. In, in discussions with the applicant, uh, we did recognize that it was, the potential was that, um, with other developments, reimbursement of the other half of the road is likely because when you build a large road like this, often you will see development build, let's say, on let's say, on the other side of the road. In this instance, that was not possible because it's interstate right-of-way controlled by the state. Um, so that's really your kind of like, I'm gonna consider that the lowest number, that's the 597,000. Um, that was essentially constructing half of the street. There was another option that was, was closer to, or sorry, that's for the larger number. The other number, so the, the lowest number was more of a third and it was more associated with looking at, uh, the, the process in which the city uses in terms of looking at what percentage of a larger street like Bill Nye Avenue is the responsibility of the developer versus the responsibility of the app, of the city. So with all development, including this project, essentially it's a 66% breakdown. So 66% of the cost is, is borne by the developer, which is what's the local street, and the city picks up the, the remainder piece. So what the third is, is it's basically half of the 66%, which was trying to look at if we, if with Interstate 80 being adjacent, once again, they would never be, they would never re- recuperate those costs through reimbursement process of another developer going in that area. And so that was how those numbers were, were derived. Once again, they're just estimates, you know? We, uh, we did our best in terms of trying to evaluate what those costs might be and try to provide alternative options that we might be able to bring to council. But as I mentioned, none of those options were selected. Only the option of no construction of Bill Nye was proposed. If you recall, ultimately what happened is, uh, that became a large sticking point and the applicant did request that the item move forward, uh, without staff's recommendation during the preliminary plat process to planning commission and to council.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions in the council? Uh, Council Stalder.
Thank you. Mr. Teeny, you said that typically the developer is responsible for 66% of the street cost. So why were we quoting the developer, the whole cost of the street to start out with and then kind of like bargaining down to 66%?
Mayor, mayor and council, the, so the, the 66% comes from Laramie Municipal Code and, and what it states is so the developer is responsible to construct the full street and then they are reimbursed for their oversizing is what we call it. This includes streets, water lines and sewer lines where we use this oversizing calculation to, uh, allow for development to put in infrastructure, but then for the city to reimburse them when they build the lines or roads that are over the, the size required for their subdivision itself. And so, uh, that's, it, it, this is what we do with every single project. The developer runs the cost, they construct the improvements and then the reimbursement comes, uh, once those improvements are in place.
Okay, I think I understand. So was it presented first to the developer that the cost would be 1.18 million or 760,873?
Mayor and, mayor and council, the, per Laramie Municipal Code, the, the requirement is that they construct the 1.18 mil, or 1.18 million dollar improvement. The, the reimbursement doesn't have anything to do with the 760,000 dollar number or the 597,000 number. Those two numbers were discussed following multiple back and forth from, with the applicant of, uh, of them saying that they did not want to construct Bill Nye Avenue. Um, as staff notes, we always try to come up with solutions or options for council to consider. Um, these were simply options that were presented. It would have been council, council would have had to accept one of these contrary to what Laramie Municipal Code does require for all developments and, uh, that was not, not selected by the applicant and so we didn't bring it forward to, uh, council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm interested to hear from the applicant why they didn't accept those, but that's, I don't think there's enough time for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? Questions? Okay, our, our city clerk has a list of individuals that have asked to make comment on, I believe it's this item, so I'm gonna have him, uh, start off with the names, there's three names on here. If it's related to this item, then obviously, uh, you can speak. If not, there's one more item after this, so, but we have three names this time and then we'll also open it up to other members of the public that would like to make comments on this also, but let's go through those three names first and then we'll open it up to others that have interest in commenting or having questions regarding this project. City clerk?
Hey, the first two are for the applicants on this project.
Okay.
So.
You gonna read the first name?
Yeah, I think it was Jim Stevens.
Right. Mr. Stevens?
Mayor and city council, uh, my name is Jim Stevens. I'm the managing member of Spring Creek Investments and Spring Creek Storage. I guess I can see why you're confused. I, I, I'm confused now because I don't ever recall hearing a 700,000 dollar number or a 500,000 dollar number ever brought up or considered. The only amounts that I saw was a 1.1 million dollars to construct that portion of Bill Nye. There was, I'm not confused about the 1.8 million, that's 150% of the 1.1 million. That's what the, the staff said I would have to put up as collateral or security for 15 years to assure that Bill Nye, that section of Bill Nye gets, gets built. So. What, what I would like to do is, is I would like to clear up exactly what we're talking about on Bill Nye. We're talking about a section of Bill Nye that starts south of Boswell on the west end of my property and it goes about 400 feet and dead ends. So there's a dead end on the north side of, of Bill Nye and a dead end on the south side of Bill Nye. The staff wants you to believe that we should construct that and then the city would reimburse it some 400,000 dollars. So does that make sense for the city to reimburse 400,000 dollars on a street that's dead-ended on both ends and may not be completed for another 20 years? That doesn't, that really doesn't make much sense. Any, any more sense than it would be for me to, to take liquid assets and tie them up for 15 years for a street that may never be built? I, I, I think there's a lot of confusion about what, what we're trying to do with Bill Nye here. This is just a section of Bill Nye out, at, out in the middle of this development. This development will never access Bill Nye. It's, it's been required that we do not access Bill Nye from this development. We can't access Bill Nye from this development because it's dead-ended on both ends. Now, if you build Bill Nye in the next year or two, I could understand that. I'd been told by staff that Bill Nye, the rest of Bill Nye from 15th Street to the south end of my property is 20 years away. So I, 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 I really have a hard time understanding that you're gonna take a section of road in, in, in the middle of the development that has access, no access on either end and wait 15 to 20 years to build the rest of it? And build that section and it costs you 400,000 and it's gonna sit there for 15 to 20 years until the rest of Bill Nye is built, if it's ever built? That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. The, uh, the other problem is, is why would you want me to build that road and, and come up with 400,000 dollars and let it sit and rot? That, that, it just doesn't make any sense. I, I, you know, I don't know. I guess I don't know what, what else to say is we're, we're using the development code here to build a section of Bill Nye that, I don't really think the city staff wants, wants it built. I think they want, they wanna ransom. They say because it's adjacent to my development that I should build it, but I don't really want you to build it because it'd be ridiculous to have a, a section of street out in the middle of nowhere and have it sit there for 15 or 20 years. And I, I, I don't follow the logic when you want affordable housing in Laramie because you don't have any, that you wanna add seven or eight or nine thousand dollars to the cost of those lots? To build a section of street in the middle of nowhere? I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't see it. I just don't see it. And I guess Mr. Edwards can talk about the, the, the legal aspects of it, but I, I, I'm at a loss because the preliminary plat, we've agreed to everything except Bill Nye. We've agreed to do everything else except Bill Nye and a sewer line that you're gonna put and dead-end at the end of the dead-ended Bill Nye. I, I'm, I'm really sorry, we've been, we've been hassling this and hassling this with the staff and we're not getting anywhere. And the city's, the city's losing out. And, you know, I, I, I don't know what else to say other than it's, it's all hinged, it's all hinged on that. That's, that's worth that. So if, if you have any other questions, I, I, I gave the council a PowerPoint presentation. I, I made a case for all the economic and, and financial reasons why this is a good project and why it should be done. The, the amount of money that's gonna go to the schools when this, when this project is completed, the, the school district is gonna get some 200,000 dollars a year. And I guess if, if your children don't go to any of these schools, I guess maybe that's not important. But boy, there's a lot of reasons to do this and Bill Nye is not, not, not the reason to, to deny it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, honorable member, mayor, members of the council. My name is Mitch Edwards. I'm with the law firm of Nicholas and Tangement and we represent the applicant. It's good to be here in person and to, to see your faces, albeit behind, behind masks. It makes a big difference to be able to present to you in person. The motion before you is one to deny this final plat that's based on a negative recommendation from the conditions relating specifically to Bill Nye, which would not connect to Third Street portion that we're talking about and which would not provide any access from any thoroughfare to this subdivision. The only thing that building Bill Nye would do as a condition is allow the city to extract money and dedication of land from this developer for the city's future use, for the city's future connection of Bill Nye for use by the general public. The other condition that is before you, that is not being complied with is a requirement to build a sewer extension under that portion of Bill Nye that does not serve the subdivision in any capacity and would simply dead-end for future development or future city use on other properties. Those conditions are contrary to state law and city ordinance and we've previously provided those statutes and ordinances to you relating to the major street plan and with respect to the sewer line. What we have is conditions that the U.S. Supreme Court has said violate the United States Constitution as unconstitutional conditions. In Nolan versus California Coastal Commission and in Dolan versus City of Tigard, the U.S. Supreme Court declared similar conditions, conditions to dedicate land and to build a bicycle pathway, to dedicate land for the public use to access the beach and to dedicate land and to build public drainage to be unconstitutional and a takings of property. In Dolan, the U.S. Supreme Court said, and I quote, "Under the well-settled doctrine of unconstitutional conditions, the government may not require a person to give up a constitutional right. Here, the right to receive just compensation when property is taken for a public use in exchange for a benefit conferred by the government where the benefit sought has little or no relationship to the property." In Nolan, the U.S. Supreme Court called these types of conditions, and I quote, "Out-and-out plan of extortion and determining them to be unconstitutional." And that's what we have here, is simply a plan by the city to extract from this developer the dedication of land that the major street plan provides that if the city wants to acquire this land, that it must do so through exercise of eminent domain. And then on top of that, to require the developer to undertake at its own expense a cost to build that road on behalf of the city for the future of the public good and use, not for the development of this particular subdivision or this particular lot. And so what we would ask for you to do is, is to vote no on the motion that's before you, which is a motion to deny this final plat, and instead reject these unconstitutional conditions that are contrary to municipal ordinance and state law and that you move to approve and do approve the final plat as it's presented to you. With that, I'd stand for any questions that the council may have. Otherwise, we'll leave it to your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else in the public that would like to make comments before we? Okay, council, we have received an invitation to ask for, ask, uh, the developer and also his legal representative for any questions or clarifications, so at this time, if you would go ahead and make those questions or, I think they're ready to give us their answers. Anyone in council want to make any questions for the developer or the legal representative? Council Stalder?
Thank you. This is just really quick and I could look it up, my internet is being weird. How many houses are we talking about or how many residences?
Uh, there's, uh, 127 single-family units.
Thank you.
The rest of it is, is, is made up of, of commercial lots.
Thank you. I apologize, I couldn't find that in the packet.
And if I could just make one clarification to that, that's for the entire subdivision? The final plat that's before you has none of those, it's one lot, actually two lots, one that already exists, but one other commercial lot.
Okay.
So those would be future subdivision final plats that would come before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is that everything?
Yeah, I had a comment, but I can wait until it's time for that.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we will get to comments. Anyone, any other questions for the developer or for Mr. Edwards? Okay, uh, let's go to council. I think Vice Mayor Gabriel has a, a question for Mr. Teeny. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know we've been over this. When I first came on council a number of years ago, this is one of the items I first undertook and so here we are again, we're still discussing this. Derek, uh, could you please address the question that Mr. Stevens brought up about Bill Nye? I, I know we've talked about this in previous meetings. Could you once again tell council the conditions and the reason why we are asking for, you know, the question that Mr. Stevens brought up concerning Bill Nye?
Mayor, Mayor and council, so the the discussion centers around the construction of Bill Nye Avenue as part of Laramie Municipal Code. One of your requirements that you have is that preliminary plats conform to comprehensive plans as well as the development or the subdivision is required to develop adjacent roads and infrastructure on their property or adjacent to their property related to the subdivision process. And through the development process and through the preliminary plat, the Bill Nye Avenue was identified, it's located within your comprehensive plan, it's also shown on the major street plan. Because it's found in the comprehensive plan and because preliminary plats are required to conform to the comprehensive plan per Laramie Municipal Code, we require that Bill Nye be shown within the development proposal. And because Laramie Municipal Code requires the construction of those adjacent rights away as well as infrastructure, the sewer line, those were included as recommended conditions during the preliminary plat process.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stevens mentions, and I think I heard this correctly, if I didn't, feel free to interrupt me. He mentioned that he hadn't heard of these proposed cost shares. I'm just wondering if that conversation could then be had, if maybe we could re reconvene that conversation if it was just missed.
Mayor and council, really that opportunity has passed, I believe. The preliminary plat process really was the opportunity for the developer and for the council to have those those considerate those talks considered. An in-person meeting with the applicant, engineering staff, the city attorney, the applicant's attorney where these were discussed. I I if they can't if they didn't recall that, I I don't know what else to say. That's that's when those conversations were had. And, you know, we would have at least presented those options to council for council to consider. Once again, we're always trying to figure out ways in which to allow for developments to occur, even if it requires council to have a consideration where they maybe don't see the full development of a road like this. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get to that point where we could present something to council.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So this was not a missed email?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Teeny, I have one question. I I am not sure that the Bill Nye that's being described would be constructed really is dead ended at both ends or if it has any benefit to the city. I think it's obvious to the to the developer that it has no use to them. Have we talked about a delayed improvement agreement so that when that when that street becomes viable for either the city or for the developer that there could be then contributions to that and to delay that improvement until that purpose is reached? Or has that been has that been discussed? Or in your opinion, will that Bill Nye section be readily usable in the near future?
Mayor and council, so the the delayed improvement agreement is is what those figures that we're talking about, the the one point seven million dollars of financial security, the applicant generally, even though they've said that they do not want to build Bill Nye, the discussion has been delaying the improvement, so not physically constructing Bill Nye right of way, right away. The reason for that is currently the city is in the process of working on collecting on the agreement for a portion of the Bill Nye Avenue that is directly adjacent to the subdivision and just north of Boswell. That process is underway as we speak, which would allow for construction of that portion of Bill Nye Avenue. Secondly, the portion of that from that portion of Bill Nye Avenue traveling north, there's a small segment that's part of this subdivision. And then the remaining portion of Bill Nye Avenue will be under construction in association with the Pledna Edition final plat that was approved by council about six months ago. That will provide the connection from Third Street to this subdivision. So what we will have in the future is we're nearing that point where we will have a Bill Nye Avenue from Third Street all the way down to Boswell and then through the subdivision to the southern end of where we're requesting Bill Nye Avenue to be constructed. Mayor, you had one other part of that question. I think I'm missing that part.
Mr. Teeny, I my my question was, has there been a discussion with you and the developer on, and and I think you've answered that, you know, that's the one point seven million money monies that you're asking for them to put into an account for future development? And the second question was, how soon before we have access going both east and west to Bill Nye through this section?
Mayor and council, so the, like I mentioned, the Third Street from Third Street to the Spring Creek Channel, that can start that could start construction very soon. And when I say very soon, possibly this season or the beginning of next season, so spring of twenty twenty-one. The other portion of Bill Nye Avenue that's kind of between the Spring Creek Channel and Boswell Drive is largely a a portion of that's under a an agreement that a past council has approved, and we're currently under the process of collecting on that agreement. And so as soon as we do collect on that, we will want to see construction of that as well. There's, like I said, there's a small segment kind of at the north end of the Spring Creek Village plat that we would have to wait until the final plat comes in association with that portion to see maybe that small connection to occur. It's possible, too, depending upon the timing, we may, you know, discuss with the developer about constructing that in a faster fashion, but really we would want to see these other two parts kind of come into play. So essentially, in the next few years, I think we could have Bill Nye Avenue from Third Street at least to Boswell and then along the adjacent portion that we're talking about with this final plat. You're correct, Mayor, that the piece and the applicant is correct at the end of their property, so the southern end of Bill Nye Avenue doesn't go any further because we have not seen any development in that area, but eventually it we hope that it connects from there to Fifteenth Street, so.
All right, and I know a lot of the future of Bill Nye is tied up with urban systems money, and that obviously is something that's that's into the future. Any other questions from the city council regarding this top this item? Okay, let's let's go to comments from council before we vote. And again, the motion is to deny, so when it comes to the vote, a yes vote would deny the future development, a no vote would bring it back to where we then reconsider to approve the final plat. Hopefully, that's correct, and I see our city attorneys on there. If I'm stating anything wrong, let me know. Comments or questions? Counselor Stalder?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all of staff's work on this, and I think it's the staff's job to say, hey, does this fit municipal code? But as a city council, it's our job to look at it and say, does this fit where we want to go? Or is this version of municipal code prohibiting growth? And I really see it prohibiting something that we need here. In the 2015 housing study, which we paid for, it said we needed one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight new housing units. So in the Thrive Study that we also just paid a hundred and fifteen thousand for, it cites "A variety of market factors have prevented development and have further exacerbated these issues," in reference to the 2015 study. So we have someone here that wants to build a hundred and twenty-seven houses. Now, going back to the Thrive Plan that we passed and, you know, are presumably working off of as a council, the population of Albany County, not just the city, but the county, is about thirty-eight thousand. And we want to get to fifty thousand, that's our goal, so we can have like a Target or Home Depot or whatever. It's probably simplifying it a little bit. Anyway, that's twelve thousand more people that we need. So if you have a three-person household, that's four hundred homes that we need to build in ten years. Two-person household, that's six hundred homes that we need to build in ten years. We're already behind on our projections from the 2015 housing study. And we're talking about denying a hundred and twenty-seven homes for a road that we don't even know when it's going to connect on both ends. Seems like on one end it will connect pretty soon, but on the other end, I don't know. You know, and I just think about the time value, like the time value of money, you know, we're asking the developer to pay a hundred and fifty percent or bond a hundred and fifty percent so we can build this road in future dollars. But what future dollars are we losing when we can't attract new companies? We talk about this all the time, like, you know, we're driving businesses away because we don't have affordable housing. And I mean, I see I see the considerations about Bill Nye. You know, but even asking the developer to to bond that money, it's going to increase the lot cost by fourteen thousand. Is that close to your calculations? Fourteen thousand per lot. So we can't talk about the fact that we need housing, we can't talk about affordable housing all the time, and then, I guess, impose all these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments? Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Back to Mr. Teeny, if I could, and I think maybe you talked about this, but I just needed clarification once again concerning that seven hundred and sixty thousand that Mr. Stevens said that he wasn't aware. Is it still too late to possibly consider that possibility? I think Counselor Stalder brings up some excellent points. I would sure like to see the city work with Mr. Stevens on this any way possible.
Mayor, Mayor and council, my my opinion would be that with this final plat, yes, it would be too late. You're during the preliminary plat processes when you establish the conditions of approval for this project. If the council so choo- so chooses to go through a process where they want to evaluate one of these, and so does the applicant, which at this point, you know, we we still haven't heard that from the applicant. The applicant requested that we take a no development of Bill Nye forward, and so that's what we did. If the applicant wanted to have that presented before council, the the proper procedure in my in my opinion, per the code, would be that they reapply for a preliminary plat and go through the process where the public can participate as well as the planning commission and council can participate in a discussion about accepting construction of a road or partial construction of a road or at a different value where the city then ends up picking up the remainder of the cost in some in some fashion, wherever that number ends up, related to what's normally required per municipal code. So if, you know, if that was something that was desired by the applicant, they could re- refile a preliminary plat, it would go through the process, and then it would be back before council with probably similar conditions, but also potentially an option that could be presented to council for their for your consideration.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor Weaver, I think I saw your hand, or did I? Counselor Weaver?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, since it appears that we're still open for questions, I'd like to just make sure that we have clarity on the number of housing units that we're talking about being built. Are we talking about a hundred and twenty-seven individual homes? Are we talking about a hundred and twenty-seven units and some combination of building? And then I have another question after that, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to get some clarification on that first.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, the it's a hundred and twenty-seven single-family units. They they can be twin homes, or they can be three-plex, four-plex, so they would they would have an attached party wall on some of some of the buildings, but they would be individual living units.
Twin homes or four-plexes, something along those lines. A lot of that hasn't been determined yet. Is that is that accurate, Mr. Stevens?
Well, the in the preliminary plat, the the lots have all been determined and and set up, so.
The lots, the lots certainly, but not necessarily the construction of how the
Right.
of of the layouts. Okay, I I appreciate that, and thank you for answering that question. I really do, because I I think that affordable housing aspect is is something we need to talk about. But I I will I will raise this issue with the council and also the developer. Sometimes when we are given the the I don't want to call it an argument, but for lack of a better word, the argument that we are inhibiting affordable housing by asking people to adhere to to certain aspects of the code or development regulations, we then come to find out that the affordable housing that we're talking about isn't anywhere near the range of the needed price points for the housing that are housing studies that the other council member alluded to before. So I I'm beginning to have a growing wariness of that because we can't really know, and I appreciate the developers' position as well, we can't really know what the price points on these housing units are going to be when we have to make decisions about the final plats. It's a very frustrating position to be in, but I do appreciate your answer to that question. I have a second question, Mr. Mayor, if I can, trying to keep track of my time here with regard to Bill Nye Avenue use, and I I think this is probably something I need to direct towards Mr. Teeny. Mr. Mayor, through you, we have in our city council materials a number of references to the fact that the Wyoming Department of Transportation has identified that Bill Nye will be the primary, if not only, other than Ninth Street, street that is utilized by this area. How is it that we've come to that determination? Has has the Department of Transportation indicated in its own future planning documents that a termination of Boswell really is imminent?
Mayor, Mayor and council, so I let me make sure I'm understanding the question because you were talking you were saying Bill Nye Avenue, but then you the last part you said Boswell?
Mr. Teeny, what I what I'm what I'm getting at is that the Department of Transportation, through its own future planning, has indicated that Bill Nye will be the main street for developments, commercial or residential or otherwise, in and out of this section of the community. And Boswell is planned to ultimately be closed off or terminated at a certain point, so Bill Nye will be the main artery, if you will, for traffic coming in and out of this area, including where this future proposed development is?
Mayor and council, so if you recall, a few years ago, it's probably been almost five years ago now, the Bill Nye Avenue's corridor plan was was done by YDOT. I think many of the members of council that are here tonight were on during that discussion. If you recall, really, the evaluation by YDOT was to determine where Bill Nye Avenue was actually going to connect to Third Street. The really short synopsis of that study was that at Boswell, which was the original intent that Bill Nye Avenue would swing out onto Boswell and connect to Third Street at that location, was too complicated as well as not safe because of the interstate interchange that's located just right south of Boswell Drive where it connects to Third Street. What you then saw was the Bill Nye Avenue corridor study recommended and required that Bill Nye transition and go north, like you see here, and go towards where Sanders Street generally is located currently and connect into Third Street. And so with that, you'll also note that it was recommended within And so with that, um, you'll also note that it was recommended within, uh, the discussions that Bill, or that YDOT was having was that they would like to see closure of Bill Nye Avenue because of the, because of the turning movements of Boswell, or the closure of Boswell at, uh, Third Street because of the turning movements that were created, um, in concert with the fact that there's the interstate interchange right there. And so, um, during that discussion too, if you recall, there was discussion about whether it would close at Third Street or Bill Nye, they really didn't know, and, and those have been the indications and kind of the discussions that they've had even with the city, um, up to this point.
So the best of, so the best of our knowledge then is that, um, the city's partners at the Wyoming Department of Transportation, um, have every, have given us every indication that Bill Nye, uh, and they've done so through a series of, uh, planning procedures and projects that we've been part of, as Mr. Tini pointed out, that Bill Nye really is going to be the way in and out of this neighborhood and any future development in there. Boswell might currently be this street, but that is, um, a limited future in any case. Uh, the, I know that the city has prioritized the completion of Bill Nye in the future for not just this area of town, but throughout the community as, as a, as a major, um, artery for connectivity. So I think, I think that has to be something that we keep in mind and it, it does kind of create the nexus, the required nexus of public need that the city is, uh, then using to justify its request through these, um, conditions and the planning regulations that we're, that we're using. Um, I think it's unfortunate that this process, Mr. Mayor, has included so much back and forth between the city council, the, uh, planning commission and the applicant. I think that has created some difficulties for us and the applicant, and my phone is ringing in the background, and the applicant, and that's unfortunate. And I think, um, those, those types of situations need to be avoided in the future because I think it has put all of us in a position of great difficulty because there's been so much back and forth with returns to different decision-making bodies that has overcomplicated this process and drawn it out. But at this point in time, I think we've seen, uh, not only from the city's future planning perspective, but also through what we've seen from the intentions of the state, that Bill Nye really is going to be a critical piece here and we have to keep that in mind when we make this decision, as difficult as that might be. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weaver. Other comments from council? Counselor Schuster?
Um, Joe, you and I are both, or Mayor Shumway, you and I are both on the USAC committee and we had a little bit of a stickler this year in that the state has delayed our multiple year USAC money for two years. So will Bill Nye start? Yeah, it'll start in 2022 because that's when we're going to start the funding on it. One of the things I want to point out is, we talked about, counselors have talked about shared commitment on it, where they were talking the $700,000 for it instead. Uh, I want a lot of people to realize that, that several years ago, we were a little bit more flushing money. Our economics hadn't hit as hard as they had right now. And the one thing that Derek did say is, if we give a discount on them building Bill Nye, the other part will come out of our pocket. There will be 1.1 million spent, and if we give a discount there, that means the city will have to come up with the difference. We are not flushed with money now, so it's a little tough. Bill Nye is going to be built, but it's probably not going to break ground on the other end of it until 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schuster. That comment from council? Okay. There's been no amendments, so we're going to move forward to the vote. Ask our city clerk to do roll call.
All right. Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Okay. So that's six yeses, two nos, one absent.
Okay, that motion passes. So the motion then has asked for, um, this to be denied and so that, at this point, is denied and, and the options are now up to the applicant on how they want to proceed. We have one more item on our regular agenda and it's item number, um, 16, and that has been assigned to Counselor O'Doherty.
I move to approve the final settlement agreement and stipulated order quieting title in the Messiah's versus the City of Laramie et al., and upon receipt of final survey, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Gabriel. Uh, this, is this Derek Tini to introduce this, or is this?
Oh, that, this is me, Your Honor, Bob.
City Attorney Southern, go ahead.
As counselors are aware, the city and several other parties were sued, uh, to quiet title in this section of West Carney between, um, Cedar and Spruce. The reason that title needed to be quieted, in the opinion of the plaintiffs, is that for at least 120 years, if not more, their house and their outbuilding and their lot was in the middle of that little stub of West Carney. I think you've seen the pictures, it's the little stub of West Carney that dead ends into Spruce right at Optimus Park. So they, uh, brought a quiet title action to clear all this up against the city and the surrounding property owners. What we have driven toward, as reflected in your cover sheet and its attachments, is essentially preserving the status quo. We're having a, a new survey is being done at the plaintiff's expense to adjust the lot lines among the affected people to reflect, you know, 100 years of use and to give the city, uh, an easement down the little strip of land for all municipal purposes. The owners of that property, of that little strip of land cannot obstruct it, park on it, build anything on it, et cetera, et cetera. So essentially it preserves the status quo for our citizens and for the city. And I'm happy to take questions. Oh, I'll say one more thing. Uh, in, in your motion, it said pending, uh, receipt of a final survey. That final survey was received yesterday due to really heroic and fantastic efforts by the engineering department. Uh, the engineers have revert, review, excuse me, reviewed that survey, made very detailed comments. Those comments have gone back to the plaintiffs and, um, they're, they will have to be acceptable, they will be acceptable. So that final survey should be completed in the next, you know, within the next week or so. Certainly we wouldn't sign this agreement without the, the final survey, um, and I'll leave it at that and take questions.
Okay. So council, with, with that in mind, any questions regarding the agreement for the settlement, uh, of this, this item? Anything from the public regarding this agreement for settlement? Council, any comments before we vote? Roll call?
Hey, Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, one absent.
Okay, well, after 100 years or so, this has been settled, so, thank you all, that's been approved. Now we go back to public comments, if there's anyone that would like to make, uh, public comments on any topic, uh, including our current, uh, agenda, you're welcome to come forward and you'll have three minutes. Anyone? On council chambers or on our phone link, like to make a comment? Seeing none, I will close this public comment period and now I'm asking the council if you would bring forward any consideration of future council work session topics. With Counselor Harrington, you have one, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would, uh, ask that we have a, a work session regarding potential options for beekeeping regulations in Laramie, so there's more clarity in, uh, in, in what it means to, to, to keep bees.
Anybody else want to move that forward? Counselor Schuster?
That, that would be fine, I had a different topic, but that would be fine.
All right, let's go ahead then and add that to a future council work topics. Counselor Schuster, do you want to go ahead with your topic?
Yeah, um, I believe it was a month ago, I don't think it was just two weeks ago. I asked one on, uh, parking lot rehab to move the, uh, percentage up to 50%, and I had a second, but I've never seen it make the list yet, so I'm just kind of curious if it's still in limbo or it needs to be rebrought up if it didn't get recorded correctly. That's, that's all I, I, mine was.
On there.
It's, it's on there, Counselor Schuster.
Okay, I looked at the sheet and I just didn't see it then, okay.
Anyway, Counselor O'Doherty?
I just wanted to clarify, uh, when I was requesting, uh, calming measures for, uh, calming traffic, I didn't just mean intersections, I meant for speed. So we know that there's several streets that are concerning and I would like to, I'm interested in learning about things we could do, like blinking, uh, warning lights to, to get people to slow down, which would help all of our intersections. So Counselor Weaver was the second on that request. May I, uh, see if that's, if the more broad thing is okay with him?
Counselor Weaver, does that meet with your approval to broaden that work session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, anything else from the council on future work sessions? All right, seeing none, um, we'll now go to Counselor Pierce for item number 19.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, Wyoming statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I believe, by Counselor Harrington. Uh, all in favor of adjournment to executive session indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, we're going to take five minutes, you're going to have to...